Thank you, and welcome to the City of Oakland Council Meeting. And we appreciate your support. And Madam City Clerk, when you're ready, can we get it started, please?
Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Meeting of Tuesday, February 18th. We will begin with a roll call. Councilmember Brown, present.
Councilmember Fife, present.
Councilmember Houston.
Karen Houston, who else here?
Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Ramachandran.
Present.
Councilmember Unger.
Here.
And Council Pro Tem Guo, who will be chairing this meeting.
Present.
Thank you showing six members present at this time. Before we proceed, I will go over speaker card instructions for this meeting. If you'd like to submit a speaker's card on any agenda item, please fill out a speaker's card and return that card to the clerk representatives at the front table before the item is called for discussion or hour and a half after the start of this meeting. For this meeting, this meeting was called to order at 3:36, so speaker cards are due before 5:06 PM or before the item is called for discussion, whichever comes first. And Mr. Chair, I turn it back to you.
Yes, if we can get us through the agenda, we do want to recognize and celebrate Black History and Futures Month, but please get us started on the agenda.
Going to item three, which is actions on special orders of the day. Starting with item 3.1, we have adopted a resolution in celebration of Black History and Futures Month in February 2025 by honoring Black changemakers in the City of Oakland working towards a transformative future that seeks to dismantle oppressive systems and advance true liberation, safety, and opportunities in our community. And I don't have any speakers on this item.
Don't have any speakers on this item? Madam Clerk, no? Members of the...I know there was a...
Actually, we do have two speakers, looks like.
Go ahead and call the speakers.
Through the chair, I think you should present first.
Go ahead, Carol.
Thank you all for being here today. I think we all recognize that with the federal experiences that we're having, no matter where you stand on the political spectrum, there are some critical things that are under attack right now, which is why this year's Black History and Black Futures commemoration of so many local leaders is critical, because we in Oakland understand the importance of diversity, but we also understand in this city, the work that so many African Americans have done to make Oakland better for not just black people, but for everyone. And so I'm happy to co-sponsor this piece of legislation with Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Houston, and our interim mayor, Kevin Jenkins. And I would like the opportunity for everyone that's acknowledged someone for the work that they've done in their district, to have those individuals recognize them today. So we can start with the mayor, if the mayor is available. If not, then we can move on to our District One honoree. I ask that we be brief in our comments and let our honorees have the majority of our speaking time. And so if we could go ahead and get started with honoring these amazing, beautiful people who've come here today, that would be amazing.
All right. A couple of weeks ago, I asked a group of young folks who we should honor for this award, and unanimously, they all said at the same time, "Mr. Price." Let's give him a hand. Mr. Price is, among many other things, the principal of Oakland Tech High School. Let's go Bulldogs, go Bulldogs. And there is no better way to honor and love the City of Oakland than to honor and love our young people. And this man has done an amazing job of taking care of our young folks, of leading them, of showing them the way to be better citizens. And I cannot thank you enough for all you've done for my own kids and for all the kids in the City of Oakland. So that's all I'm going to say. I'm happy to give you this proclamation. Come on up, sir.
Members of the council, let's go over down.
Through the chair, if we can have the honorees come up to the middle of the dais. There is a portable microphone at the front, so you can turn to face the public. If all council members and their honorees can come to the front of the chamber, please.
First and foremost, I want to thank God for the opportunity to wake up and be here today. Growing up in Oakland and in this world has taught me that tomorrow is in promise, and I'm thankful for every day that I wake up as a result. I also want to thank the current esteemed mayor, who's not here, Mr. Jenkins, I'm sorry, your cousin sends his regard, Mr. Williams at Oakland Tech. At any rate, I also want to thank our current esteemed mayor of the council and all of our esteemed council members, especially Councilmember Unger, for taking the time to recognize me as a community member and resident of District One that has given the last 25 years of his life to educating the youth of Oakland. It's weird being given this award at this moment in time, because the work is not done. And I'm still, and there's still much more work to do.
I see you, my proposed response, and then his last response is underneath.
It's all good, yeah, yeah.
Okay, y'all take a look at it in a minute.
I don't know where you fit, but hello. At any rate, yeah, and still I'm honored, as it validates some of the choices I made in my life as a young person, growing up in the town. And being given the opportunity to speak today, I have to give thanks to my parents who are here. It's a blessing, who instilled in me a love for learning and a desire to serve others in the community through their words and actions. I want to thank my brothers, one of whom is here, for protecting me as I made my way through Oakland and its public schools. It wasn't always easy, for sure, for different reasons. I also want to thank all of the teachers and educators I had growing up for being patient and loving with a wayward young man. You wouldn't believe that I would have been a principal in high school all those years ago. I also want to thank the current members of the education community I'm part of. The reality is, I'm one man, and I cannot do it all myself. It takes a village and a team, and I have that at Oakland Tech. I'm thankful for the wonderful students, teachers, and families that I work with. Lastly, I want to thank my partner, Mercy, and my son, Emil, and my daughter, Naomi, for supporting me and pushing me to be the best that I can be on a daily basis. I am who I am because of them. Thank you all for doing the work you do. Together, we all play a part in making it happen. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Barbara. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
We do have District Two first, but I'm sorry, we have Ms. Barbara Montgomery standing here right now. So we're going to skip District Two. We're going to not skip them completely. We're going to come back, but we have the illustrious...if y'all don't know who she is, she's going to tell us a little bit about it. But if I, in my career, Ms. Barbara, can do a fraction of what you've done for this city, then I will be successful, and I want to give you the honor.
As you said earlier, I thank God for being here, for the journey that I have taken. I want to thank you, Carol, my councilperson, for recognizing me. I want to thank the entire council for recognizing me. It's been a wonderful ride, and it still is. I, you know, I give my credit to some of my longtime friends, some of them who are here, some of them who have gone on, that worked with me throughout my life. When I came to Oakland, I didn't know anything about West Oakland, but I met such wonderful people that worked with me. And throughout my life, I have strived, since I've been in Oakland, to do the best that I can. I represent West Oakland District Three, which I'm proud of. I'm proud of my councilperson. I'm just proud of West Oakland from where it has been and where it is today. It hadn't been hard, it was easy, because I like to work in the community. I love my city. And if you love where you live, you do what you can to make it the best. I have worked under some of the most wonderful mayors here. I could name the ones that I worked under. Mayor Lionel Wilson, Eliu Harris, Jared Brown, the police, the police cheese, and crime, and to help make Oakland what it is today. So I encourage you, as you see us standing here, to get involved and support your city, support your council, learn your council people, and find out what's best for where you live. It has been a joy, it's still a joy. I'm a commissioner, my director is here, would you stand, from the Housing Authority, and her staff, my family is here, would you stand, my family, my friends, that have strived with me, that have worked with me, that have stayed home and brought me to meetings. And I just want to thank you for this opportunity during Black History Month to recognize me. And I haven't really given up, I'm still on shovel boards, still striving to make Oakland the best place that it can be. So get involved and come along with me, and let's help make Oakland be where it should be.
District Four, let me have District Four.
Let's go back to District Two.
Two, District Two? Where's District Two? Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Yay. I have to hug this woman. Hi, on behalf of Councilmember Rebecca Kaplan in the District Two office, we are recognizing Tracy Williams. Who's already famous in Oakland. We want to acknowledge Tracy and her team back there from Urban University, which is one of their locations is on Grand Avenue. They do an incredible work with single mamas, going out, housing, meaningful employment with a brand new e-commerce business called Shop. It's on Grand Avenue, right next to the resale store. So I'm going to hand it over to Tracy to share more about what their work is.
Thank you, Deborah, you're a friend of ours. In the words of the great philosopher James Brown, "I am black and I am proud." Thank you to Councilmember Rebecca Kaplan, Deborah Israel, our friend, and thank you council members for this beautiful honor. I personally stand on the shoulder of my parents and my grandparents and my great-grandparents who taught me how to love and to serve. It's an interesting time to receive this honor, as our world seems to retreat from justice and love, and I accept this honor on the behalf of those beautiful single mothers standing in the back of the room. My staff, Erica Hidley, my besties here from LA, Mario, Sandy, my partner, Orla. But most importantly, I'm glad you ladies are standing up, because I was going to ask you to do so. I want the City Council to see you. I want them to see you. You are our North Star. You are pillars of love and resilience in your community. You are in close proximity to many of the social issues that are happening today. I consider you one of the most untapped superpowers in this community. And so I hope that this moment, standing here, inspires you not only to achieve those housing and employment opportunities and goals, but that you too will be a leader one day in this town. I love you.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is an honor to be able to, on behalf of the District Four Council Office, present our Black History and Futures Month commendation to the one and only Rachel Wolf Goldsmith. Now, if you haven't met Rachel before, you have definitely seen her work and her presence around Oakland. The famous, the beautiful Woman of the Black Panther Party mural in West Oakland. The beautiful mural of African women dancing at the side of the Tribune Tower. The mural of queer people right down Broadway. There is so much beauty and life that Rachel has injected into Oakland, and it's not only through her art. Apart from being the creative director of the Bay Area Mural Project, Rachel is an innovator. She has brought together NFTs and technology to combine with art, so that artists and creators here in Oakland can make a real living. She has done so much to put Oakland on the map for all the right reasons, including convening people, convening creators, artists, activists, and musicians, and more, right across from City Hall. You have Wolfpack Studios, which is a beautiful space, if you haven't checked out their new location, and using these spaces to make sure that we're continuing to create positive change and that we're celebrating beauty in Oakland. And for all of your contributions to putting Oakland on the map through art, through vibrance, through your physical art, and through your spirit, I'm proud to present our commendation.
Thank you. Wow, it is surreal to be here right now, being recognized. I'm extremely grateful for this moment, extremely grateful to be nominated by you for this honor, and feeling blessed and humbled to be surrounded by my community here. Making murals, to me, is making a monument, and a lot of times, we don't have the same monuments that we see throughout history and throughout time, either due to colonization taking our monuments down, or due to us not having our own monuments that represent us. So to me, making murals is taking people that I know in my community, blowing them up to this monumental scale, where we are forced to look up to them. And to me, it's really important to bring into the fold images of people who are living, who are making change today, who are around us to celebrate our history while it's being made, to honor people while they're living, so that they don't have to wait to die to see themselves honored. I think it's a beautiful thing to bring people together around art and creativity, because creativity is what feeds our ability to imagine the future and to imagine where we're going and to create a roadmap to share with other people. So I'm honored. I want to ask Langston Avery to stand up. This is my business partner at Wolfpack Studios. He's also the founder of Negusa Nature, and he's fundamental to the success of Wolfpack Studios and to what we're creating right down the street. So come to his comedy show this Friday. We're cultivating spaces where we can laugh and where we can dream about the future and where we can empower other people and youth to do the same things, to stretch their imagination, to imagine the way that the Panthers imagined what Oakland could be like, what the world could be like, if we take care of each other and we move together as a pack and not as individuals. So thank you for this honor. Thank you to everyone who came before me.
Thank you, thank you. It's, well, let's go ahead and go District Seven, then we go.
Hello, everyone. This youngster, and I'm not saying this in a disrespectful way, I called him a pup, right? I'm so proud of him, of the things that he has done, and I'm not going to say his name until the end. This young man is the son of two Oakland Unified District employees. He was born and raised in Oakland, East Oakland. He went to the OUSD schools and graduated from Oakland High School, went and attended Laney College and Alameda College, ultimately transferred to San Francisco State University, where he earned his BA in Urban Studies and Planning. After graduating from San Francisco State, he attended California State University East Bay, earned his master's degree in Public Administration. He served as Director of Housing Justice Initiatives at United Way Bay Area. In 2020, he was elected to serve the Board of Trustees for Parata Community College. He advocated for students' housings and worked closely with his colleagues to ensure that the district students were able to navigate through the COVID pandemic. And he also orchestrated across sectors partnerships with Parata Community College in Oakland, a community-based organization to enhance educational opportunities for the students served by the college. He was the past president of California Association of Black Student Educators, a former member of the Alameda County Public Health Commissioners, elected to the council representing District Six in November 2022. He was elected by his colleagues to serve as City Council President. November the 6th of this year, following his election as president, I'm going to say his name now, Kevin Jenkins stepped away from City Council and assumed the office of the interim mayor, where he serves and represents all Oaklanders and navigate the city through many challenges that it faces. Kevin is firmly rooted, firmly rooted in Oakland, and I'm proud, he's a proud father of Elijah, second generationer Oaklander. And Kevin, I'm going to say this to you, I'm proud of you, man, I'm your senior, but I'm bound down to you on this level, and I appreciate everything that you are doing for this city, and you step and I appreciate everything that you are doing for this city and you stepping up. You're gonna be a hard act to follow. So come on up here, big man.
So people won't realize this about me. My people staff will tell you, I do not like being celebrated, but I really do appreciate the honor. An Oaklander just like Ken. So I never wanted to run for city council. I never wanted to be in elected office. I wanted to be a sports agent. Came to the city of Oakland, and I wanted to be a planner. I went to school for planning. I got my degree in planning, and I thought I was gonna be a planner. So I came to the city of Oakland, and I wanted an internship. And so they told me that I did not have enough experience to be an intern, and that's why I'm mayor here today. Thanks, Kenny Houston. I appreciate it.
Proud of you, man.
All right. And so hello, everyone. Happy Black History Month. This has just been so beautiful. Thank you, Councilmember 5, for leading us in organizing this beautiful occasion. And so now I get the amazing opportunity to honor an amazing organization situated right here in the town, and that is Hack the Hood, led by Executive Director Samya Zubar. Please join me. And so for those of you who may or may not know, Hack the Hood is an important organization for our Black youth in Oakland. We often say that youth are the future, and Hack the Hood is a shining example of what it means to put that into practice. Their programs have become a critical part of our personal and professional development infrastructure for our youth. And as you all know, that the Bay Area is genuinely the tech hub of our communities. And so we know that oftentimes, Black and Brown students do not get equitable opportunity in the tech space. And so Hack the Hood is literally leading in this space for our young people, providing laptops, critical programs so that they can have access to an industry that is the future for our young people. And so just want to make some space for their executive director. I know the team is here as well. Feel free to join us to just kind of talk a little bit more about the amazing program that you all are offering, and congratulations.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Rowena, for this amazing honor. Mayor Jenkins, the city council for this opportunity. It is beyond exciting to be recognized amongst such amazing organizations and people that are doing great things here for Oakland. We serve Black, Latinx, Indigenous, and AAPI youth, as Rowena shared, to create access and opportunities to the tech sector. I'm born and raised in San Francisco. I lived in Oakland for a bit. We're a program that serves Oakland, Alameda County, and really the greater Bay Area. As someone who was born and raised here, I have seen gentrification, displacement, and the movement with the tech industry in this workforce. And it's really important work to us to ensure that the folks that are from here have the opportunity to be a part of these places and spaces if they so choose. So I'm really grateful to be in a position where I get to lead an organization doing impactful work like this and working alongside everyone in this room to ensure that we're providing real opportunities for our youth. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Mayor, would you like to go next? Kevin, come on.
So first, I want to thank Councilmember 5, Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Houston, Lanice Jones for helping to work on this. Did I forget anybody? Yeah, for helping to work on, putting this together. So my honoree as mayor of Oakland is Supervisor Nate Miley. Supervisor Nate Miley has long been a champion of all things Oakland. He came to Oakland in the 80s and served on council from 1990 to 2000 in District 6. After that, he was elected to the Alameda County Board of Supervisors. And in that, he's been fighting for Oakland, pushing to fight a little harder for Oakland. And there's always more that we can do. And K-Top, I believe, we have a video because Supervisor Miley is in New Orleans right now. He wanted to be here, but I recorded a video.
Happy Black History Month for your service to the Oakland community. You've been doing work in Oakland for a long time, and nobody will say how long it's been, but we appreciate you serving as council members, serving as our supervisor. And in between that time, you've done a number of good things that have benefited the residents of Oakland. So we want to honor you for Black History Month.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate the interim mayor, Jenkins, and my good friend Kenny Houston here, who's on the city council, for presenting this to me and recognizing me for my time on the city council. 10 years there, 24 years here as a county supervisor, longtime resident of the city. I know Kevin's doing a great job bringing the city back. I knew it took Kenny getting on the council to get Kevin to start, you know, making things happen. And it really took Kevin getting to the mayor's seat. He's doing a great job. And I just want to say, you know, Black history is our history. It's the history of this country. You know, we belong, we deserve, and we've benefited as well as the country has benefited from us being here. So the thing is, I want us to keep the struggle alive. I want us to keep on fighting. I want us to keep holding our heads high and being proud. Keep the faith, because we're gonna make it happen. So once again, thank you, Mayor Jenkins. Thank you, Councilmember Houston, for this great honor.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you. Is Pastor Joseph Cotton present? Come on up. Come on up. Come on up, Pastor. District 5 is honored to recognize Pastor Bishop Bob Jackson from Axe Full Gospel Church here in Oakland, California. And Pastor, Assistant Pastor Joseph Cotton is a member, a leader, with Axe Full Gospel Church. And let me just take a minute to read. Whereas District 5 proudly honors Bishop Bob Jackson, a devoted husband, father, grandfather, revered pastor, spiritual leader, and dedicated community advocate whose unwavering commitment to ministry, leadership, and service has profoundly shaped Oakland. As the founder and senior pastor of a Axe Full Gospel Church established in 1984 with a small group of dedicated believers, Bishop Bob Jackson led his remarkable growth into one of the largest and most vibrant congregations in the region. Beyond the pulpit, he has dedicated his life to the uplifting the marginalized and underserved, spearheading initiatives such as food distribution programs for families in need, a prison ministry offering hope and redemption to incarcerated individuals, and housing and employment programs supporting those experiencing homelessness or financial hardship. And Pastor Bishop Bob Jackson is one that I've known for a lifetime. I still remember going to Bible class, and he's the one that if you needed an attitude adjustment, he would give it to you. And, but I'm extremely grateful for his support. It's one of the reasons why I'm here. I even ran for reelection because Bishop Bob Jackson wanted me to be sure I'd get back until we get Oakland to where it used to be. So with that, if you can say a couple of words for us regarding Bishop Bob Jackson.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm glad to be here to represent Bishop Bob Jackson. As he gets a little bit older, you know, he experienced a little bit of challenges. He probably won't want me to tell all of y'all that. But I'm here to try to pick up the slack. But he's honored. He is very grateful and thankful for you guys to recognize him. One thing, if you know Bishop Bob Jackson, is that he loves the city of Oakland. And he campaigns for the city of Oakland. He don't take the crime and things to happen in the city lightly if you have to go to Sacramento or wherever. He's calling anybody to be able to help, to take care of the city of Oakland. And so he's honored to receive this award, and I'm just here to fill in, just to say thank you and represent him and allow him also to be able to get a little bit of rest because we still have a lot of work to do to make the city great. Amen.
So I'm going to allow for 10 seconds for anybody that wants to take pictures with their honorees and their family members to get up here. You've got 10 seconds so we can take a group picture before we wrap up this ceremony. So if you have an honoree, a family member, a colleague, come up. These faces are great, by the way. Please come up here. So there's not going to be anybody left in the gallery to take the picture. But you'll be on K-Top, so come on. Yeah, he can come too. Only in Oakland. Okay, last but not least. Last but not least. Come stand next to me, young man. We have an amazing vocalist. Y'all, simmer down now. Simmer down. You all, I want you all to give your attention to the center of the room because we have an amazing young vocalist who's a student at the Oakland School of the Arts, who was supposed to start off this program today, but I did not want anyone to leave without hearing the vocals of... He's saying, "Thank you." I'm not even finished with my statement. Of Raylan, he is an amazing student, but we are so blessed to have his song today. So he's going to sing the National Anthem, the Negro Anthem.
Can we please stand? Can we please stand? Ready? Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven ring. Ring with all harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the listening skies. Let it resound loud as the rolling seas. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the present has brought us. Facing the rising sun of our new day begun. Let us march on till victory is won. Stony the road we trod, beater the chastening rod. Felt in the days when hope unborn had died. Yet with a steady beat have not all weary feet come to the place for which our fathers sigh. We have come. That with tears have been worn. Come on, help me sing it, y'all. We... Come on. Treading our path to the blood slot. Out from the gloomy past till now we stand at last. Where the way gleam of our bright star is cast. Hallelujah. Thank you so much.
We do have a few speakers on this item. Patricia Wells, Shona Armstrong, or Shora Armstrong, and Mr. Hazard. Please approach the podium in any order if you would like to address the council for this item.
Greetings. Greetings, Mr. Mayor, President Potem, and our illustrious city council. My name is Patricia Wells, and I am here representing the glorious Housing Authority of this great city of Oakland, California, as its Executive Director and CEO. I want to reaffirm and honor all the honorees this evening with a special attention to our Commissioner of 14 Years, the regal, noble, courageous, graceful, and one who is a teacher of all, Ms. Barbara Montgomery. She has absolutely family. Ms. Montgomery has been a teacher of mine for over 26 years as I had the opportunity to serve this great city. She continues to strive on behalf of over 38,000 individuals served by the Oakland Housing Authority and in fact, has made strides in making sure that residents have a voice in every membership activity here in the city of Oakland as well as in national venues on behalf of residents through all public housing authorities. I want to share in closing, on behalf of our chair and our illustrious Board of Directors, as well as the over 375 staff who work for the Housing Authority, our appreciation, love, and honor for Ms. Montgomery with a quote by the great sister of, Big Sister Maya Angelou. "Love recognizes no barriers. It jumps hurdles, leaps fences, penetrates walls to arrive at its destination full of hope, love, and power." And for that, we give honor to Oakland Housing Authority for Ms. Montgomery. Thank you.
Shona Armstrong, Mr. Hazard for item 3.1.
Hi, I'm Shona Armstrong. I'm a parent of three kids who've gone through Oakland schools, and I've been working on public education for years. I think it's the place where we nurture citizens for a healthy democracy, which is under fire, as we know right now. And anybody who goes into public education knows they're going to be on the forefront of the battle for a strong, healthy democracy in society, and especially now. So I just want to really thank Mr. Price and all the teachers and all the principals and everyone in OUSD right now who is on the forefront of this battle we're in right now. And I also want to thank all of you because I think you, local governments, local schools, we all have a really important role to play. So thank you, Mr. Price, for everything you've been doing for years and that I know you're doing now with ICE raids and defending our students throughout Oakland. So thank you.
Gene Hazard. You know, it's good to recognize Black culture because we made a lot of contributions to the global economy. But when we come to Oakland, we don't see the economic prowess that's here. Every other community gets funding. We don't. We want to applaud for culture. Well, what about the economics? But what about the economics? This shirt I got on, Black Wall Street. They burned that city down in 1921. Okay? When are we going to get the economics in this town? We are low on the totem pole. Even when we got people who are sitting in these seats that look like us. And we recognize us. Let's start recognizing us and approve monies and economics for the black community. Look in this town, where can you, where's the hub for our economics? But look at these other cultures. In the Asian community, in the Hispanic community. But we don't have anything economically that we could hold on to? Let's stop giving us these soft recognitions. Let it be economics.
Thank you, Mr. Hazard. Mr. Chair, that was the last speaker for Item 3.1. We will just need a motion.
So moved.
Second. On the motion by Councilmember Fife, second by Councilmember Brown, to approve this item, to adopt this item, excuse me. Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Fife.
Aye.
Councilmember Houston.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramachandran. Councilmember Unger.
Yes.
And Chair Gaio.
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of seven ayes, going to Item 4, which is modifications to the agenda and procedural items.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to move to the not, I mean, to the non-consent calendar. S 5.18 and S 5.17 had some concerns about it. The last meeting about the local requirements being 11%. And also about S 5.17 about certain individuals. I wanted to know the scope of that work, how certain individuals had actually lost their properties behind this. So I want to move that to the non-consent calendar. I'm making a motion to, so I can speak to that.
Is there a second? No questions from the council?
S 5.18 and S 5.17. The one for the change orders from 25% to 65% and the one about the vacant property tax.
I'll second.
Anyone else have any questions, councilmembers? Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Through the Chair, I believe those items just need a motion and a second, which was complete, to move those items to the non-consent.
It's moved and seconded, yeah. I'm sorry?
Correct. It doesn't require a vote. It just is a motion and a second to move the item. Through the Chair, I believe the Administration has an amendment to 5.17. But I believe since that item was moved to non-consent, we would take it at that time. So I believe that completes Item 4. I'll go to the consent calendar, which is all of Item 5, all of the Item Fives. Going to Item 5.1, which is approval of the draft minutes from the meeting of February 4th. Item 5.2, Declaration of a Local Emergency Due to the AIDS Epidemic. Item 5.3, A Resolution Regarding Declaration of Medical Cannabis and Health Emergency. Item 5.4, A Resolution Declaring a Local Emergency on Homelessness. Item 5.5 is a ordinance regarding the East 12th Street remainder parcel and DDA and ground lease. Item 5.6, An Ordinance for, excuse me, Family Bridges Lease and Big Oakland Rent Forgiveness. Item 5.7, A Resolution Approving Maya Korea Memorial Bike Way. Item 5.8, A Resolution for the National League of Cities Appointment, Appointing Pro Tem Gaio as a Voting Delegate for the National League of Cities, and Appointing Councilmember Fife to represent the City of Oakland as an alternate delegate. Item 5.9, A Resolution Regarding Youth Venture Joint Power Authority Board Appointments. Item 5.10, A Resolution Confirming the Mayor's Appointments on the Commission on Aging. Item 5.11, A Resolution Regarding the Appointments of the Landmarks Preservation Advisory Board. Item 5.12, A Resolution Approving the Appointments to the Commission on Homelessness. Item 5.13, A Resolution Regarding Adrienne J. Bennett and Andrea, Adriana Bennett, a settlement. Item 5.14, A Resolution Regarding a Settlement for Deena Delavies versus the City of Oakland, Christopher Chae King. Item 5.15, A Resolution Regarding a Settlement for Mary Nicholas and Chathon Kong. Item 5.16, An Approving Information Report for Measure KK Status and Expenditure Report Fiscal Year '23 through '24. Item 5.17, Regarding the Vacant Property Tax Has Been Moved to the Non-Consent Portion of This Agenda. Item 5.18, A Resolution Regarding the Construction Contract Amendment for Limerick Bridge Seismic retrofit has also been moved to the non-consent portion of this agenda. Item 5.19, A Resolution Regarding the Metropolitan Transportation Grant. Item 5.20, A Resolution Regarding the Avengi, I'm sorry, EV Energy LLC Grant. Item 5.21, A Resolution Regarding Samuel Merritt University Land Donation to the City of Oakland. Item 5.22, An Ordinance Regarding the Transfer 21st Street Bridge and Tunnel Franchise to PG&E. Item 5.23, A Resolution Authorizing the City to Authorize Library Grants From Friends of the Oakland Public Library. And Item 5.24, A Resolution Confirming the Mayor's Appointment to the Rent and Relocation Board. And just noting that, I'm sorry, and that concludes your consent calendar. And you do have speakers on this item.
Hear from the speakers.
As I call your name, please approach the podium in any order. If you signed up for one item, you will have one minute to speak. If you signed up for two items, you will have two minutes. And if you signed up for more than two items, you will have the maximum amount of time, which is three minutes. David Boatwright, I have you for two items. Joyous Morale, I have you for three items. Item 5.1, I'm sorry, Scott Bradley, I have you for three items. Item, I'm sorry, Gilbert Mendoza, I have you for three items. Andre Bonita, I have you for three items. Nita B., I have you for three items. Mr. Hazard, I have you for over three items. Sheila, or is it Sherla McCracky? Rick McCracken, Ralph Cairns. Actually, Ralph, we will call you for Item 5.17, since that was moved to the non-consent calendar. Nancy, you will be called for 5.17. Derek Barnes, I have you for two items. Kevin Dally. Mavis Griffin. Samuel Adams. Herman Adams. Edward Escobar. Francisco Acosta. Jorge Jimenez. John Williams. Francisco Acosta. Jorge Jimenez. Ethan Pittard, in any order. Please state your name for the record before beginning. As with past practice, those in chambers will be called first. Those on Zoom will be taken afterwards. Go ahead, Mr. Boatwright.
I was waiting for the council member to be seated so he could hear all this. David Boatwright, District 4. With respect to the three items that are declarations repeatedly on the agenda, it would be great to see some actual items on those declarations of emergencies so that we can see what's being done in the city to resolve those issues. And I strongly recommend that we look hard for things that we can present on those three topics. The cannabis, AIDS, and the homeless. And we see more on the homeless, but not very often. Thank you.
Greetings. My name is Nita B. I'm with the Village in Oakland. As you know, we've been coming here and to the Life Enrichment Committees to share testimonies of folks who have been unhoused on the streets of Oakland. I just wanted to shout out to Ms. Rowena Brown, to Rebecca Kaplan, and to Ken Houston, because they have responded in their own ways to what we've done, what we've shared. And we hope that the rest of the council and administration will also respond. And specifically to Ken Houston, he acted fast. And he got Mr. Gilbert, who's been here for the past two weeks, back into the safe park that he had been kicked out of. But that did not stop the problems that he was having there, that all of the residents are having, and all of the interventions that the City of Oakland funds. And both of them will be talking about their experiences on the safe park. But those safe parks really need to be managed better. It's a waste of money, of the amount of harm that's happening. Not just the safe parks, but the tough sheds, and the tiny houses, and the hotel programs, and, you know, the voucher programs. It's just a waste of money for the amount of harm. But today I'll be sharing, we have copies of all the statements that are being read today, passed out to everyone. We don't have copies of what two of the folks will be sharing of their own personal experiences, but we do have the copies of the folks who share their experiences with us. I'll be reading two declarations, if time permits. The first is from Kaylee Holland. "My name is Kaylee Holland. I have been unhoused for four years since I was a minor. I'm 20 years old now. I have epilepsy, and I was recently diagnosed with stage-two bone cancer. I currently live on East 12th between 26th and 29th Avenue. I stay in different places with RVs as I have nowhere else to go. I was previously evicted on San Leandro Boulevard by the City of Oakland. I had a canopy tent that I set up next to my car. My car and the canopy were my home. The car also got me around. The city destroyed everything I had. They towed my car, and I never found out where they towed it to or how I could get it back. They took everything: boxes of clothes, all my shoes, my children's belongings, my bedding, my dog food, my dogs' toys, my ID, my medical paperwork, pretty much everything I owned and needed. The eviction was really messed me up. I had a dog, and it became too hard to take care of her properly when I was left to wander the street. I had to put her down, and that was terrible. The city did not offer me any resources, and they did not offer me storage for my property. They recommended a church I could go to. I went to the church, but they weren't able to help me. I would like to see the city spend their money on helping us rather than hurting us. And a note, since the city threatened to tow the community on East 12th between 26th and 29th Avenue on the weekend of January 12th, we've lost track of Kaylee, and we cannot locate her to this day." The second testimony I'm reading is from Juan Morales. "I am Juan Morales. I'm a 42-year-old Mexican man, a resident of Jurassic Park. I have been unhoused in Oakland for 10 years. In the 10 years I have been unhoused, the city has never offered me services or shelter, period. In the 10 years I have been homeless, the city has evicted the encampments I've lived in at least 20 times. I've lived in..."
Thank you, Ms. B. Your time is up.
Hello, my name is Joyous, and I'll be reading a testimony. My name is Merlin Davis. I'm a 56-year-old African-American man, born and raised in Oakland. I've been unhoused for about four years. I lived in a trailer on East 12th and 26th Ave. The city threatened to tow all the vehicles the weekend of January 12th. They came on Thursday afternoon and didn't post any notices that they would clear our encampment. They posted orange stickers on our vehicles, and they said they would tow us on a Sunday in four days. No services were offered. No storage was offered. We were not offered a space in the city's safe park site. There were at least 20 RVs, trailers, and campers there. The city didn't wait till Sunday to tow us. They came the very next morning on Friday at 9:00 a.m. and started towing vehicles. They took the Suburban my neighbor Eric lived in. He had a Medal of Honor from the Oakland Fire Department because he went into a burning building and pulled people out and saved their lives. Eric doesn't have legs, and he just had gone his prosthetic legs nine days before they towed his Suburban. They took his prosthetic legs, all his medication, and his Medal of Honor from the Fire Department. And they did not allow him or any of us to get his legs, his medicine, his clothes, his shoes, or his medal. This was the first time I experienced an eviction by the City of Oakland. I was so scared to lose my trailer and my property. I was stressed. I didn't know where to go. I couldn't think about starting all over again from nothing. I have no family left, except my youngest daughter, who is eight years old. Luckily, volunteers from the Love and Justice in the Streets came with the U-Haul. They towed most of us to a new location and helped us move our property. By the end of the weekend, almost all the RVs and trailers had been relocated. I relocated on the corner of 14th Ave and East 12th, near the Burger King. The city never showed up on Sunday morning. There were two trailers left behind and four people who lived in makeshift structures who were also left behind. They also were not evicted because the city never came when they posted they were. But the threat to tow all of us caused us a lot of unnecessary anxiety and chaos. Since I have been at my new location, none of the city or nonprofits have come to check on us, offer us services, nothing. My tools are important to me for getting hand-worked jobs. I store them in my trailer. If I lose them, then I lose my livelihood and my source of income. I have a kitten who is my support animal. I have gotten my kitten for a month now. I never understood why people said they needed service animals for emotional support. Now I understand. Since I've been homeless, no one has approached me about services, resources, shelter, or housing. I have been fortunate or not to have enough to have never been evicted before. Thank you."
My name is Scott Brayley. I live in District 1. This is a testimony of Ronnie Medina, taken by the Village on January 3rd, 2025. "My name is Ronnie Medina. I have lived on East 8th Street for five years. I have been unhoused for seven years altogether. While I have been unhoused, I have been evicted three times. The first time was in 2019. They told me I had a week to leave. I didn't leave, and they locked up my vehicle with yellow locks, and they tried to throw my property away while I was gone. But my neighbors stopped them. I left, but I came back eventually because I have nowhere else to go. After that, I started to get harassed. Every four days, they came to tell me to leave, and I was getting pulled over three times in two weeks for no reason. Prior to this, I was never pulled over. The police who were telling me to move my RV were the same police who pulled me over. When they pulled me over, they told me to move my RV, but I was never cited or pulled over for a traffic offense. I was pulled over and harassed for living in my RV. There were six of us in mobile homes there. Next eviction was during, in 2020, during the COVID shutdown. I couldn't believe, they didn't believe I was homeless because of how I dress and keep myself. The police said I don't look homeless. The same officers told me to leave because they didn't believe I was unhoused. They would show up with eviction notices saying we had one week to move. Then they came back every day for a week, asking, 'Why are you still here?' The day of eviction, I moved for 24 hours, and we came back. But there were giant yellow rocks to prevent us from coming back. Eventually, the rocks went away, and we set up our RVs again. The third time was 2023. We were supposed to move with a two-week notice. During the two weeks, the same two cops came by every day, saying, 'You are going to be gone. Get out of here. We don't want to see you anymore.' I ignored them or would leave to avoid them. Because of what am I supposed to do? Where am I supposed to go? I'm from here. This is the neighborhood I feel comfortable in. During that third eviction, Operation Dignity offered me a spot at the Wood Street Tough Sheds on the other side of town. I did not know about this and was not offered a spot at the, and I did not know about and was not offered a spot at the city RV site. I accepted the spot at the Wood Street Tough Sheds because I was tired of being harassed. The next day, I was supposed to move in. My RV was acting up, and I couldn't make it to Wood Street. I came the next day, and I was told I lost my spot and would have to wait to get in. I had been waiting for two years. The city's actions have left me mad, feeling disrespected. I have not been helped by the city. Instead of spending thousands of dollars on evictions and tow, the city should use that money for showers, food, clean water, services, and permanent housing."
Good afternoon, council. My name is Gilbert Mendoza, Oakland native, 47 years. Wanted to tell Mr. Ken Houston, thank you for getting me back into the safe parking place after 45 days. But we still have a lot of work to be done over there. There's nowhere to wash our dishes. Five months ago, they took our laundry privileges away because I did two loads instead of one load per day, and there's the two of us. So we have a lot of work to be done, and the bathroom's still, just a lot of work to be done. And just wanted to leave you guys with a question for the day is, what is a practitioner? These are the guys that are supposed to be watching us at the place, the safe parking place. They're all ex-convicts. Nothing against convicts. At the same time, if you have no communication skills, no compassion, because you've been abused from the system by the deputies, how are you going to be able to take care of people that are homeless, going through mental issues, jobless? Instead of saying hello, how you doing, they want to tell you what you can't have in front of your trailer. They're more on you about, you have a better chance dying there than getting housing. I've been there for seven months. We're playing, we're arguing about my dog peeing. I can't control my dog. She's 16 years old. Her name's West, and if she pees by the trash can, she pees. I do carry doggy bags. I pick up my dog's poop. But instead, I got ridden up four times, and I've been back for one week. So with that being said, thank you for your time and your hearing. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Andre Benito. I've also been at the safe parking place for the last two years, or two years plus, really. Initially, I was on San Leandro Street and 85th, right by the gas station in my RV, and they came by a couple of times and said, "Would you like to go to this place?" I said, "Yeah." They said, "You'll only be there for three months to six months tops, and you'll get housing." It's supposed to be a transitional thing. And I said, "Okay, we can do that," because I do want to get housing. I do want to get out off the street. I mean, I don't want to be there. You know, I want a nice shower. I want to have a warm heater, you know what I mean? And come home to a house. I don't want to be on the street or in an RV. It's not my ideal way to live, you know what I mean? I'm just doing the best that I can. And I've been there for two years plus now. I have not got housing. I have not got anything homeless. I feel like I'm going backwards. All I've been is getting harassed by the people that work there. Like he said about the stuff I have outside my trailer, which are my belongings, I've now thrown away most of my belongings because I've been harassed so many times about. I'm threatened to be kicked out because I have things outside my trailer. I mean, I have two dogs and two cats, and me and my girl live in this little RV, you know what I mean, for the last seven years now. And I thought I was supposed to get better. I've done everything they've asked. I went to Roots. I went to here. I went, you know, I mean, all these different places to try to get, plus I was in a motorcycle accident about two and a half years ago and broke my femur in my arm, and I can barely, I just started walking normal again. Like, I'll never be able to work. I was a painter for 22 years. I can't work anymore. So, I mean, I'm kind of stuck in what to do, you know what I mean? I'm just kind of waiting on everybody to help me out, which I've never, you know, needed help before, but I've been asking for help now, and there's people there at the park that are getting housing, and they've been denying it over and over again, like multiple people. And I'm sitting there asking for housing, asking for help over and over again, and I'm getting none. So I just, I don't understand what's going on that, I mean, I still have a trailer that leaks. You know what I mean? There was a roach infestation there. There was just rats there. It's just, we're supposed to get hot meals. We get one hot meal a week, maybe, on the Sunday morning. They bring breakfast. That's it. We don't even get lunch anymore. There's just a bunch of stuff that was promised. I mean, there's 120 people there, and we have five bathrooms, or, sorry, four, because one of them doesn't work. There's bathrooms on one side and bathrooms on the other side, and on one side, they're closed down. They decided to close them down, took it upon themselves to close them down because somebody left trash in there or something, and they didn't like that. I mean, it's a bunch of homeless people. What do you expect? You know what I mean? If they need other people to clean the bathroom, I know everybody should be accountable for themselves, and we try to say that, but we can't watch everybody. We're all grownups. You know what I mean? We're all grown men and women there, you know what I mean? I have two kids of my own. I haven't been able to bring them to my house at all or my RV there since I've been at the park, which is another thing. I mean, where am I supposed to bring them? I mean, I can't have money for a hotel. And so basically, I've been seeing my kids very less, a lot less in the last two years than I should. You know, 11 years old and 14, and my 14-year-old is asking me questions, like, "You even have a house?" And this and that, and what do I tell him? You know what I mean? I say, "An RV park, but you can't come see me?" It's just, it's messed up, you know what I mean? I've been trying-
Hi. I'm Maven Carter Griffin, and a former and still resident of Wood Street Peoples Collective. I am currently staying on Willow Street. I've had pneumonia on and off since Christmas time. I spent Christmas in the hospital. It was horrible. I don't have a trailer anymore because the city destroyed my trailer, opened it up like a cracked egg, and dropped all of its belongings into the dumpster. And I wasn't supposed to be moved. I was supposed to put stuff in a cargo container. That was the agreement. And they took away the only shelter and stability that I had and have had. Again, the city has made promises, and I've stuck out a lot of hardship and harassment, like masturbating people, not myself masturbating people, but the guard at the RV park was sexually inappropriate. There's been so many things-
Thank you, Ms. B. Your time is up. I want justice. I want to, I want respect.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Sheila McCracken, here to speak on the resolution of the bikeway naming after my niece Maya Correa. I've spoken of Maya's passing at more meetings and more times than I can count, but today I want to take a moment to tell you who Maya is. Maya was such a presence in her four years here. She loved to play with her dolls, sing loudly and usually off-key to her favorite songs from Frozen and The Little Mermaid. She loved to play with her older brother Guy and hold her little sister. At her preschool, new kids would always be buddied up with her, where she would remind them, "Mommies and daddies always come back." Maya was my best friend and my little twin. One of my favorite things she ever told me was that, "Sorry, can't make things better. Only ice packs," a testament to her sassiness at such a young age. She is missed beyond words. To have Maya memorialized and remembered for bettering Oakland and keeping other kids and people safe by building and naming this protected bike lane after her-
Good afternoon. My name is Rick McCracken. I am Maya's grandfather, and I am here to thank you and supporting and want you to support this resolution for this bike trail and naming it after Maya is fantastic, very much appreciated. But additionally, what I want to say is that it's a very hard thing, obviously, losing a grandchild, a child. It's the worst thing that can happen, at least in my life. But what I really want to say is, we need to do more around this issue, not just this bike path, other bike paths, and the way we design them in Oakland. We should have parents that feel comfortable taking their children on bike rides, that take their children across a crosswalk on a street. So thank you for what you're doing or this resolution, but also, let's please make Oakland, all of Oakland, a safer place.
Good afternoon. Samuel Adams, Baines Group Incorporated, a general contractor in Oakland, local general contractor, supporting item 5.5, East 12th Street Development, and how important it is to approve these projects for Oakland residents. I want to honor Maurice Senegal today, Oakland native who passed at the age of 48 years old on January 28th in a car accident in West Oakland. Maurice was a North Cal carpenter who constructed many of our structures in Oakland, including Bark Connector in 2012, Kaiser Oakland in 2014, The Black Panther, Affordable Housing Resident, and many more. Maurice worked with the Baines Group and many other trade partners since 2012, and in 2022, we successfully helped his son get to work in Oakland after being formally incarcerated for seven years. Maurice was a big brother and mentor to other Black and Brown tradespeople and will be missed. We have seen his final sunrise and final sunset, and we honor him today. Maurice Senegal. Thank you.
One moment, if I may interrupt. Through the chair to the public speaker, Mr. Adams. Could you repeat the last name so we can honor him in memory?
Thank you. Maurice Senegal, S.E.N.E.G.A.L.
Thank you.
My name is Jorge Jimenez. I'm here to talk about the ordinance that was passed December 17th, reducing the bank years for housing providers. The ordinance was at 44. Nikki Bass, who has decided to move on to the county, brought in Mayor Sheng Tao, who was already voted out to break the tie. This should have been left to the council that's currently here and should have been addressed in future meetings. Instead, they came in and they pushed it through. This is not a well-thought-out idea. Most of the people who have bank, most of the housing providers who have bank rent are small providers who probably only have one unit. They help the tenants stay there, and allowing them to keep that bank rent will protect them in the future. If you allow it to be reduced to four years, trust me, most of them will be forced to use it as soon as possible, affecting tenants. There's tons of people here who can't make it. All the stuff you guys keep adding on to housing providers is only going to make that worse.
Good evening. I'm Steve Edrington, longtime Oakland voter and advocate in this city. On December 17th, we believe the city council took an illegal vote. We believe the mayor had been recalled as of December 5th, and we asked the council to put those items back on the agenda and either repeal it or confirm it. Either repeal or confirm. We believe, based on state law, because if you read your charter, it says that you point to state law in terms of matters of recall. If you read your own charter, that's what it says. And there was a letter from Brenta Forte Harpen that went out that outlined the legal thing. We believe you're getting bad counsel from your city attorney, and we think your city attorney is incorrect. And the issue is, we can fight about it. We can waste a lot more public time and money, or you can just put it back on council. Let's vote on it. You guys can vote on it again. Either it goes forward or it doesn't. Or we can take you to court and fight about it and have that come-
Good evening, council. My name is Francisco Acosta. I'm a small housing provider, and I'm also a member of the East Bay Rental Housing Association. And as Steve and JJ were saying, we oppose the passing of this measure because the vote that broke the tie was illegally casted. We, the people, including myself, were involved in the recalling of Mayor Sheng Tao because of her, well, we all know. I don't have to tell you why. You can watch the news. And for that reason, that vote was illegal. So if she didn't break the tie, that measure wouldn't have passed. And let me tell you, if you decide to move forward with it, that's only going to hurt small housing providers like myself, and it's going to create more problems for the rest of the community. And while I'm here, I want to say, you know, all these people that have been displaced, that have been evicted, what are the tenant activists doing about them? Where are they? Why aren't they here to help and find a shelter or do something for them? I know. Because there is no money. There is no landlord to sue, because that's what the tenant-
Good afternoon, city council. My name is John Williams, a member of EBRAS, well, I'm still here for the same reasons as the four gentlemen before. It's ridiculous that you guys kind of removed and allowed that vote to be confirmed with an ousted mayor on recall. And like the rest of us, we need to kind of revote on that particular measure. It was illegal, clearly. She was an ousted mayor brought in to break a tie vote. But once again, too, the whole idea is that you guys are losing out with tenants, because particularly, we're small landlords who don't do rental increases regularly. With this measure, it's going to increase us to do it regularly, increasing the rents. I have a tenant currently, never went up on rent for 10 years. But with your new policy, it's forcing me to make sure that I have everything intact to increase the rents. The reason why I wasn't increasing the rents, because she couldn't afford to stay in the rent. Every month, it was already late. So with this new policy, it only encourages me and other folks to say, "Listen, every year, go up on the rents." With what you guys are proposing now, it makes us lose value, even if we don't do it, to kind of sell our properties because we-
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Good evening. My name is Herman Adams, and I'm here to support item 5.5 for the East 12th Street parcel. I'm here in support for the SAHA development teams, and I'm with the Baines Group, who is a general contractor, who's here to, oh, thank you, who's here to let you know that we are definitely in support of this measure, and I'm happy that you all are considering and taking the measurement to support this item, to help affordable housing in the community. I appreciate your efforts, helping change Oakland and making sure it's going in the right direction and supporting the community. Thank you.
Gene Hazard, go to cleanOakland.com and go to my blog. Firstly, I keep bringing before you regarding fentanyl. And when we looked at the crisis, public health crisis for cannabis, for HIV, and for the homeless, they all have the same resolution. Being resolved, the city council says ceasing is a public health crisis. So why don't you have fentanyl on here? That's a public health crisis. So when the city attorney is telling you, they're telling you a bunch of crap, because you voted back in July 24 to declare fentanyl as a public health crisis. So why don't you have it on the agenda? Secondly, I just packed you out three items. What you need to know about the transaction and use tax. Item 4.26.010, the title for the ballot measure, and that's the ordinance, the ordinance you did was 13388. No, 13833. And it says, the title, this ordinance shall be known as the City of Oakland Transaction and Use Tax. It does not have anything in that item, ordinance, that speaks to a sales tax. And then the city attorney has an unmitigated gall to put in the prototype, transaction use tax, and put in parentheses, sales tax. If you present that to the voters, I will file with the California Bar Association against Brian Richardson for malfeasance. That's the right, lying to the public in the vernacular. You better not do it. You better not have on that ballot measure that speaks to sales at all. Be forewarned, I told you at close session, and I'm telling you now, so it's recorded. And then I will also file with the State Attorney General's office for the city attorney to lie to the public by putting in parentheses on that prototype. So if you send it to the printer, you better take that out. Also, I gave you a copy of the rebuttal that the city attorney signed off for, meaning in the ballot measure, that transaction use tax will not have sales tax. And for the interim mayor to continue to speak to it being a sales-
Thank you, Mr. Hazard. Your time is up. Ethan Pintard, Kevin Dally, Derek Barnes, Edward Escobar, if you were in chambers, on Zoom- if you were in chambers on Zoom, please raise your hand so I can identify you at this time. At this time, all names have been called. E.
Yeah, my name is Ethan Pintard. Uh, I'm here because I love Oakland. Thank you, council member, uh, for providing, or what we need to do is inform our homeless or unhoused community of the resources they have. 211, that's a start. There's, when I've spoken to the unhoused, they don't trust it. We need to be advocating for the starting place. Then we can get them referred to Oakland organizations such as Building Opportunities for Self-Sufficient Sustainability. I think I messed that up. Bay Area Community Services. The unhoused community, though, does not seem to trust them. Because the unhoused community really, and we need the tenant activists to be part of this conversation. They should be here tonight. They should be here with the small property owners. I also want to help, uh, you know, commend you guys. We just funded, I think there's an agenda on the, uh, we just funded four affordable housing projects in Oakland through the state of California. We also have 193 units being built at MacArthur High.
Thank you, Mr. Pintard. Moving to the Zoom speaker, Ibra. Can you please state your name before you begin?
Hi, Madam Clerk. It's Derek Barnes. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. You have your two minutes. Please begin.
Great, thank you so much. Greetings, uh, Mayor Jenkins and council members and city staff. I'm Derek Barnes, D3 resident and CEO of the State Rental Housing Association. I'm so sad to report that we stand at crosswars in the governance of our city. We're not just debating mayoral appointments. We are confronting the very integrity of our democratic process. The events and activities that a recalled mayor participated in leading up to December 17th mark a very dangerous precedent, uh, in Oakland's governance, and we must not allow the erosion of public trust to go unchallenged. Let us be clear, the recall of an elected official is a direct expression of the people's will, a constitutional mechanism meant to restore accountability when leadership has failed. The people of Oakland exercised that right on November 5th, and the majority voted decisively to remove the former mayor from office. The Alameda County Register of Voters certified those results December 5th, and from that moment, the outcome of the mayoral duties were no longer in question. Um, yes, uh, this council then, in a display of political manipulation, refused to immediately recognize that reality. Instead, prioritizing democratic integrity, the presiding council president facilitated a series of deliberate procedural maneuvers that allowed a recalled mayor, an individual whom the voters had already removed, to cast tie-breaking votes on a highly consequential ordinance, actually two, uh, before her office was even declared vacant. I think we ought to take stock in all of this. I think the previous, um, speakers, um, said it pretty well. I think, you know, we're not here to, um, you know, to create confusion. I think we all want a greater Oakland, and we should think about, um, a remedy for what happened on December, December 17th. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, that was the last speaker. At this time, all names have been called.
Thank you, members of the council. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to Rebecca. To approve, I make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the amendments with the two, um, items moved to non-consent.
A second. Rebecca Kaplan. Councilmember Kaplan, you have your hand up.
Thank you much. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, colleagues. I just wanted briefly to support, uh, two of the items on our consent calendar. Obviously, uh, many important things going on throughout our community. But we recognize that two of the greatest crises that people need to see action on are safer streets and affordable housing. And so I want to really appreciate all of the incredible work that has gone into item 5.5, the affordable housing to be built at the East 12th Street remainder parcel, uh, that many people have worked on for quite some time to bring this now to a reality before us, and appreciate everyone's support for item 5.5 so that we can turn a space that otherwise could be an abandoned space and turn that into vibrant and desperately needed housing for our community. Second of all, I want to talk about street safety and bicycle and pedestrian safety and protecting the lives of our young people and the lives of our community, including those who walk and bicycle and use wheelchairs and rely on our public transit and other ways to get around our community. And so we have before us tonight the opportunity to make that commitment visible and durable with the renaming of the Lakeshore Avenue Bike Way for Maya Correa, and also to make sure, as we voted to do, uh, all of us on December 16th, that not only do we rename the safer bike way, but that we make sure we are funding and building it so that we make sure that we are protecting everyone in our community going forward, and that Maya may be remembered and uplifted, and that her legacy may be a safer future for everyone. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Brown.
Um, thank you so much. Um, and thank you, um, councilmember Kaplan for, um, allowing me to join in on, um, this renaming. And I just wanted to offer a few remarks, and really thank you so much to the family. Um, I know Maya's, um, grandmother, grandfather, mom and aunt are here with us today. And so, um, you know, regardless of the mode of transportation, everyone who travels on our streets should be able to do so safely. Um, and last year, we had 30 traffic fatalities, and that was 32 many. Um, we need a continued sense of urgency to truly improve road safety here in the city of Oakland. And so I'm really, um, I know that the leadership of our former council president Nikki Bass on this item, as well as Rebecca Kaplan, and I'm really grateful, um, for them allowing me to join in, um, in supporting this project. And also want to recognize the Department of Transportation for really taking an immediate response on this. Um, and so, um, really look forward to seeing this all the way through and kind of what was mentioned. We, we need to, um, have continued attention on improving the safety, um, on our Oakland streets. And so that is definitely a priority of mine. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second on the floor.
On the consent calendar, moved by councilmember Five, seconded by councilmember Houston. Um, this would exclude items 517 and 18 as they were moved to the non-consent portion of this agenda. Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Five.
Aye.
Councilmember Houston. Council, councilmember Kaplan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramachandran.
Aye.
Councilmember Unger.
Yes.
And Chair Galio.
Aye.
Uh, the consent calendar is approved with a vote of seven ayes. Would you like to go to 517 and 518 now? Going back to item 517, I will read it into record, and I believe staff does have an amendment for this item. Item 517, adopt a resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter into the professional services agreement with SCI Consulting Group for the administration and management of the vacant property tax for a five-year term, with an option to extend for two years without returning to council for a total contract amount not to exceed $2,283,900 and appropriate $76,725 from the vacant property tax fund balance for the funding of the first year of the proposed contract. And you do have two speakers on this item.
Let me first, first hear from our, our director and, uh, present the item. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin Rosman, Director of Finance. Uh, for this item, um, there is a, um, an updated resolution that has a few strikeouts, um, as we presented to the FMC committee. We were, uh, directed to come back with a revised resolution. Um, we removed the two-year extension from, um, without coming back to council and adjusted the, um, the cost. So the contract or the approval in front of you is for five years, um, instead of seven, um, and for the amount of $1,589,500. And also, there is a typo in the seventh whereas clause. Uh, we typed 2210. It should be 2270 as the fund number.
Councilmembers, any questions?
Yes, through the chair. I know this doesn't have to do with their scope of work, but I know many individuals that have lost their properties, for these vacant properties from being blighted by, um, illegal dumping over and over and over, and they stopped, you know, cleaning it up, and the city ended up cleaning up, and they lost their properties, their vacant property. How is that anywhere in the scope on their addressing on these individuals that actually lost their property because of this blight condition in Oakland?
So through the chair to councilmember Houston, the, the, if a, if a property owner loses their property, the county of Alameda does the, um, property disposal. And after they've received, uh, the revenue from the property disposal, then the revenue comes to the city of Oakland. Um, once we send over the properties that have liens, and if the liens have not been paid, uh, timely, then the county pursues the property sale. The city does not do that action.
Any other questions, councilmember? If not, let me hear from the public. Thank you.
As I call your name, please approach the podium in any order. Please state your name for the record before beginning. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand so I can easily, excuse me, identify you. Nancy Seibotham and Ralph Kans, in any order, please.
Good, good afternoon, Ralph Kans. Um, I emailed you all yesterday with some comments about this issue. And one thing that concerns me, and this goes to really all contracts you're doing now, is there should be a clause on this that the city can get out of it after one year or two years, or when you decide you need to get out of it. Because this is something that could potentially be done by city employees. And I understand we have a time issue at the, at the moment, but through coordinating with building and a bunch of other things, there could be working together between different departments to make this more effective and things like building enforcement more effective. It really gets to back with, with councilmembers Houston was talking about. There needs more coordination between building and those building inspectors and things like the vacant property tax. They all go together. When you get these house flippers out here who will buy a house the day they, they get it, they're out ripping it apart. They don't pull permits. And then they underestimate what it costs. I know of a house in my neighborhood, they built an entire new house. The permit says it costs them $165,000. If that's true, they could solve our homeless problem quite easily in this city. That's one minor example. I know another house, they completely rebuilt and spent a year on it, was $30,000. Now, that could all be rolled in with the vacant property tax because the vacant property tax can pay for code enforcement. It needs to be looked at in a more holistic way that would solve a whole lot of problems. And my last comment was the fact that John Bliss has given a lot of money to Rob Bonna, Libby Schaaf, other members of this council.
Good evening, council. All right, good afternoon. My name is Nancy Seibotham, and I'm here regarding this issue. We've laid off 100 people in the city, and you're giving a contract out that city workers could be doing. And like the gentleman before you, before me just said, the person that you're giving this contract to is very involved in the politics of Oakland. Haven't we learned our lesson already with what we just went through? And we keep doing this over and over again? I would seriously look at the workers that need the job that you are laying off. And they know this city. This contract's going outside the city. The gentleman may have a house here, but this contract's going outside the city. And you are hurting the workers of this city, and you're hurting what you are doing in this town. So I would really appreciate it if you look at this very seriously and start looking at the contracts that you are making and who you're giving them to. Because I remember when one of the developers in Oakland was forgiven $80,000 by the former mayor because of connections. And there's going to be a lot of us looking at how you vote on stuff from now on. Like I said, learn your lesson and hire the people back that you laid off to do the job that you're handing out to others. Thank you.
Mashan.
Thank you. I just want to, um, express that for those who are not on the finance committee, um, several members, myself included, asked a lot of questions about why this contract came to us last minute. And I believe very strongly that we need to collect vacant property taxes. It's revenue that's essential to the city. But this contract expired in December, and it only came to finance committee last week. And I'm hoping that for all, which effectively tied our hands as far as needing to find someone to be able to collect these vacant property taxes as soon as possible. Personally, I believe from everything I understand of our finance department and revenue division, we could be doing this work in-house, that we could have staff that are trained to do this work. The collection of these revenues are remarkably similar to other sources of revenue that we do collect. So I did ask at finance committee whether this could be a lim, a more limited time scope contract, because this year, we need to collect these taxes by June. Whether or not we could amend this contract to one year, and I was told that this would have to, then the RFP process would have to continue, and there would be a time issue, so that the committee instead then decided we would keep the five-year and remove the two-year extension, basically moving it from a seven-year contract to a five-year contract. But I, of course, still have concerns, especially because I genuinely believe this work can be done in-house. And in the supplemental staff report, which I appreciate the information, and we have, um, quite a bit of funding left over in this balance to be able to train in-house staff members and purchase the requisite databases to be able to do this. Um, but that being said, I would like to ask staff one more time whether they would be amenable to making this a one- or two-year contract rather than a five-year contract so that we can train staff in-house and not contract this service out.
Thank you, Erin Rosman, Director of Finance. Through the chair to councilmember Ramachandran. Um, if we go back out to, um, adjust this contract, we'd have to do another RFP because the bidder bid on a five-year term. So their pricing may change. If we go, if we take back to them a one- or two-year term, we can't guarantee that this price, that we'll get this price. If that is, if the will of the council is to not move this forward and for us to go back and do a RFP and find out what the, um, what the cost would be for a minor portion, uh, we can do that. But there is a, a consequence of, um, taking that approach.
Thank you. Councilmember Mashan, done. Okay.
I'm okay, yeah. If it's the will of this body to amend this contract to a shorter term, knowing that the price might increase, I'm certainly open to that. But I just do want to state for the record that it's very unfortunate this came to us only after the contract expired because now time is, is running, and we do need to collect this money. But depending on the will of this body, I'm open to either keeping this five years or exploring what the amount would be if it was lower to one or two years as a contract.
Thank, thank you. Councilmember. Councilmember Kaplan.
Yes, thank you. I did want to see if we could hear from legal counsel whether, rather than redoing the RFP, if we can just authorize this contract that is before us now for a two-year basis and also to ask whether the bidder is here in chambers or on Zoom and can speak to our questions. I I also want to make sure that it's clear on the record that the Finance Committee did already move the recommendation from seven years to five years. I want to make sure that's clear in terms of what's before us. But I also think it's really important that we work to bring this work in-house as well as, I want to say, I'm glad we pushed hard for the answers to the questions about the available funds. We did find, thank you for the update, that there is some available fund balance. But this is work that should ultimately be done in-house. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Houston.
My question is, is there a cancellation clause within this, in this contract? And also, do they have to abide by local participation by training someone within that contract? Through the chair.
Through the chair to Councilmember Houston. Our boilerplate contracts that the city enters into with any professional service agreement always includes a termination clause or several several different clauses, one being termination, another force majeure, and generally an abandonment clause. So if there's unusual circumstances, yes, the city generally has the opportunity and the ability to abandon a contract.
Through the chair, prefer, no performance clause, no performance clause?
I would have to defer to the city attorney about the the terms and templates of our legal agreements as they are the owners of the agreement.
Okay, I'd like to hear it.
Through the, through the chair to Councilmember Houston, can you repeat the question? Are you speaking to the contract language or the language in the RFP?
A clause that, a performance clause. And what does it say in the in the contract about performance? Do they have to have metrics and measures on what they're going to be doing? I mean, what, is there just a boilerplate of termination clause?
Our standard professional service agreements do have a termination clause. I have not seen the proposed contract for this this contract yet as it has, is still going through the approval process.
And through the chair, does it have any local participation in this contract?
If local participation is a requirement, then we would have that in there. So I, I don't know off the top of my head, but there is a standard of local, small, local business enterprise requirement. Before we issue the RFP, we go through the process of trying to determine availability of that. If that, this scope of work had vendors that are registered for small or local, small, local businesses, then they, then D W S would have applied or required that that was in the RFP. I don't remember off the top of my head if there is a local, small, local participation percentage, if it was assigned to this one or not.
Yeah, I'm not, and we, so we moving forward and I don't have my answers.
Thank you. Other, yes, Councilmember Brown.
Through the chair to our director, especially given since I'm not on the Finance Committee, I just kind of have a very, a couple of specific questions. And kind of reviewing the supplemental reports. I am curious, do you know offhand, like as we're comparing, how much we're spending out of pocket for the service versus how much they are, how much they are collecting over a three, four-year kind of like span? Like, do you have like a chart that kind of outlines like the the savings or like how much are we really kind of gaining? And then I think my other question also is, what would it take for this service to actually be collected in-house?
Okay. So the overall collections of the vacant property tax are solely through this vendor. So there, the activities or the revenues that have brought, been brought in for the last, since its inception have been through the use of this vendor. And so it's been around five, five to eight million dollars each year. I'd have to go back and look at the the historical collection. We report on vacant property tax revenues when we do the quarterly R and E's. And last year in June or July, we brought a report to this body, clearly you weren't here then, that reported on the historical collections of vacant property tax or what we, what has actually been collected. This vendor has a direct correlation to all of those collections because they are the vendor that administers the 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 collection process.
Yeah, and so I think my specific question is, as we're kind of like comparing how much they're bringing in versus how much it it costs us to pay, what is that?
So we've paid approximately two hundred thousand dollars on an annual basis for this vendor and it it's varied over the years. There's a, you know, some variation between, you know, a hun, a couple of thousand dollars. So they, they, we've spent two hundred, about two hundred thousand dollars with them for them to bring in about between five and eight million dollars, depending on the year.
Thank you. And then just curious, you know, what would it take if if we were to pursue this like in-house?
Right, so this vendor provides us with a database. They have a call center. They do send out the notices. They have the sort of G I S access and the expertise, different accesses to various databases that we don't have access to. So they're kind of a one-stop shop. So if we were going to bring that in-house, then we'd all have to replicate all of those, all of that functionality. So we'd have to create another database or purchase a database or incorporate it into a database that we currently have. We then have to do the the noticing and what have you, which is something that we've done before. We do for other properties. It is the analysis of all the various properties and going through the rigor that they do with terms of water usage, utility usage, the viewing, the aerial photos, handling the call center. There are the things that we would have to build up in order to be able to do that. And so we don't have that capability in-house at the moment.
Excellent, thank you so much. And just one last thing. So if it's two hundred thousand annually and it's a seven-year contract, is that correct?
Five years now.
Five year, okay, thank you.
And if I could add, the vacant property tax measure says that there's a fifteen percent administrative cap for it. So the, if the costs exceed more than the fifteen percent administrative cap, then that cost has to be borne from another fund.
Thank you, Councilmember Unger.
So we've already gone several months without collecting the vacant property tax. And while I support the long-term goal of bringing this in-house, I am quite worried about what the ramifications would be if we go back to the drawing board for this contract and go another several months, who knows how long, six months, a year, without collecting that money. That's real money that we can spend on fire stations, on town camp, on parks, on all of the things that we want to spend it on. So I am in support of, in the long term, of coming in-house if we can. But in the short term, we need to collect that money because we are in a budget crisis.
Thank you. Councilmember Fife.
I I share a similar perspective. This item was passed out of the Finance Committee, if I remember correctly unanimously with the amendment to do what Councilmember Kaplan said, which is to change the agreement to a five-year term versus the seven years. And I just, through the chair, if you could clarify, Director Rosman, what is the direct relationship, if any, of this consulting firm sending out the notices to these property owners to pay these these taxes? And when are those taxes due? Because of, I I saw on the website a couple of days ago that notices are going out for property taxes right now. So does that timeline concur with vacant properties? Or is it just, you know, places that are are currently operational, functional with people residing in them?
So then through the chair to Councilmember Fife. The notices for vacant property tax collection generally goes out in March. So you, depending on where on the city's website and which collection notices or tax notices that you're, you may have seen, there are different start dates. So business tax starts January one, this one we start March one. And there's, our RPTT has a different sort of cycle. But they all should culminate with the end result before August so that any delinquent properties can be put on the next year's property tax statement. So when we put liens on someone's property tax for delinquent taxes here, they have to be provided to the county of Alameda no later than August, approximately August 10th. So we would do, send out notices for vacant property tax March. They would go through the identification, either they pay. If they don't pay, we do an assessment. They can come do an appeal, a hearing, and go through all of the due diligence process, which should end by the end of July so that we could then have a comprehensive list of properties to provide to Alameda County to put on their property tax statement. Those those accounts that are sent to the county of Alameda, the property owner would receive their property tax statement sometime October. They usually get their property tax statement in October with their first payment due in December. So any properties that had a lien from the city of Oakland then show up on their property tax statement that the property owner receives in October when they make the first payment. If they make the first payment in December, then that would be the first opportunity that the city would receive any lien revenue from the process.
So just to summarize, the first time the city would be able to realize any revenue from notices sent out in March would be in December?
No, sorry. That's, if you had a lien, December would be the first time we would get a payment. If you just paid willingly, then sometime between March and June, the city receives the current revenue.
Thank you for that clarification. So I I just wanted to reiterate that the reason that this item was on the consent calendar for today's agenda is because it passed unanimously out of the Finance and Management Committee. I do share concerns that some of our public speakers made about scrutinizing these contracts when they come to council. I think one of the most recent incidents I recall coming before us very late was our security contract for the city of Oakland. So a lot of these contracts come to us in crisis to make a decision on a short-term basis and we've got to change that. I also recognize that it's a chicken and an egg thing because there's so many vacancies in the city that it puts a lot of pressure on our existing staff to get things done in a timely manner and it's just almost impossible. So we're in a crisis almost every single day in every single way in the city of Oakland. And I do not want potential revenue coming into the city to add to the existing crisis. So I, once again, want to move this item forward with the limited scope that we amended in the Finance Committee. And I would, if if necessary, through the clerk, if if I need to make a motion, I would make that motion at this time.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Yep, and I just wanted to say thank you so much, Director, for answering all of my questions, definitely in support as well.
I'd like to thank you also.
Anyone else, council? Find a county, a city clerk if you can, there's been a motion or a second.
Through the chair to the maker of the motion, just making sure your motion included the amendment made by staff when I, after I read the item into record.
I I would need that repeated, please.
Yes, second.
So it's a resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter into a professional services agreement with S E I Consulting Group for the administration and management of the vacant property tax for five-year term for a total contract amount not to exceed one million, five hundred eighty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars and appropriate seventy-six thousand, seven hundred twenty-five dollars from the vacant property tax fund balance for the funding of the first year of the proposed contract and an amendment on the seventh whereas clause changing the number two-two-one-zero to two-two-seven-zero.
Yes.
Thank you on item five seventeen, moved by Councilmember Fife, seconded by Councilmember Kaplan to adopt as amended, Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Fife.
Aye.
Councilmember Houston.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramachandran.
Aye.
Councilmember Unger.
Yes.
And Pro Tim Gao.
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of seven ayes going to item five eighteen. Adopt a resolution waiving advertising and competitive bidding and increasing the change order limit for the contract with Disney Construction for the seismic retrofit, seismic retrofit of Limerick Boulevard Bridge from twenty-five percent to sixty-five percent of the original contract amount for a total contract not to exceed nine million, one hundred ninety thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars. And there are no speakers on this item.
City administration, please give us a report.
Good evening, my name is Ahmed Salwan, Principal Civil Engineer, Oak DOT. I will be talking about this item and I have four general talking points for this item. First of all, for the background. The Limerick Boulevard Bridge crosses over Saucel Creek between Park Boulevard and Clements Road. This fixed arc bridge is almost hundred years old and has been designated as a historical landmark. The scope of this project includes seismic retrofit and preventive maintenance work. The project is funded by federal, state, and local matching funds. The city awarded construction contract for this project to Disney Construction in 2023 for five point six million dollars with authority for up to twenty-five percent in change orders. Regarding local business requirements, this is a federally funded project and thus the project requirements are to comply with the Federal Disadvantaged Business Entertvise Program. The DBE goal for this project was eighteen percent. The contractor has a DBE participation of twenty-four point seven-two percent for the project. And regarding the change order justification, so several unforeseen conditions contributed to the increased project cost, including newly discovered massive quantities of concrete spalls. So concrete spalls are when concrete is breaking or chipping off the structure and then the need for additional scaffolding, newly identified cracks, delays due to the discovery of an owl nest, need to remove buried concrete blocks, additional bridge repair, barrier repairs, bridge deck rail removal, et cetera. Had these unforeseen conditions been known at the time of design, the engineer's estimate would have been significantly higher than the original estimate, resulting in higher bids. Staff believes that the extra work needed to mitigate the unforeseen condition, conditions is warranted to achieve the intent of the project, to make this bridge safer and more resilient to structural damage during future seismic events and increase useful life of the structure in general. The, now about the funding sources. So staff is seeking authorization for two point two million dollars in additional change order capacity to accommodate up-to-date project changes and additional unforeseen conditions that may arise between now and the completion of the project. Once the authorization is received, the staff will negotiate and finalize the change orders and seek reimbursement from Caltrons for approximately one point nine million dollars of the total extra cost. The city would then be responsible for a local match of two hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. To the best of our knowledge, the extra cost will be deemed participating and reimbursed by Caltrons. In the unlikely scenario, if Caltrons does not provide additional grant funding for any reason, the city has reserved sufficient funds to complete this project from Fund Two-Two-One-Eight, which is Mayor BB, Alameda County Voters Approved Transportation Sale Tax, and Fund Five-Three-Three-Six, Mayor KK, the City of Oakland Voters Approved Bond Mayor. So therefore, the staff, recommendation is to increase the change order limit from twenty-five percent to sixty-five percent of the original contract amount to ensure we complete this safety project. Thank you.
You. Any questions? Councilmember Houston.
Yes, my concern was the justification from twenty-five percent, that's over a hundred percent increase on change orders. I mean, that's massive to me. And so I had asked you a question last week. What was your local participation? You said eleven percent. I'm not sure if you understood what I was saying, but isn't our local?
No, I apologize, I misunderstood your question. I was referring to the local participation as far as funding is concerned. So for this project, this is a federally funded project, so we have a DBE program that we- so we have a DBE program that we have to comply with, which is a federal program and administered by Caltrans. So our Department of Workforce and Employment Standards, they determine a DBE goal and then got approved from the, from Caltrans, and that's how we get the DBE goal for this project, 18%. And the contractor is participating by 24.72%.
So through the chair, we don't have to use, do our 50% local participation on this project?
No, we cannot use that local business program for this project because federal funds are involved in it.
So the original local participation was 18% and you guys are at 24%? Is that correct?
That is the, at the time of the bid, it might be more. But it's not local business participation, it is disadvantaged business participation. So it might be, it's not, it's not at the local level.
So you don't have to apply, I mean, you don't have to hire local individuals to help out with this and train them to learn how to do the scopes of work?
So all these requirements are federal requirements. We cannot, if we have to accept federal funds, we cannot use our local regulations.
But you don't have to actually, you could do it willingly.
No, we cannot do it because Caltrans would not allow that.
So you can't go over 24% local participation?
As I said, this is a DBE goal. So when I, when we are referring to local business, I'm, I'm assuming you are talking about city of Oakland, local business. So DBE is a regional-wide program, it's not a only city-wide program. City contractors can participate in it, but it's up to the contractors who they choose.
So I just want to close it with this, that, that this is an issue that we've had for years. When I wasn't even on councils, our local participation. Councilmember John Hamey just, just said something about, you know, on this other one that we, I had wanted, had information I wanted on it, about we have to start building capacity. And I got a problem with that, that we need to build capacity on a local level to build the individuals that live here in Oakland. And I'm, I'm gonna fight that to tooth and nail. That's why I had that question, because you had said 11% and I was thrown off by that. So, so I'm clear. Is it 24% local participation? I mean, DBE, it's 24%? All right, okay.
Thank you. Anyone else, members of the council? Any, how about public speakers on the item? So with that, I need a motion and a second.
Move approval, Kaplan.
Second.
On item 5, 5.18, moved by councilmember Kaplan, seconded by councilmember Fife, councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Fife.
Aye.
Councilmember Houston.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramachandran.
Aye.
Councilmember Unger.
Yes.
And Pro Tim Gao.
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of seven ayes going to item 6.1, which is your public hearing. We will need a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
On the motion moved by councilmember Kaplan, seconded by councilmember Fife to open the public hearing, councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Fife.
Aye.
Councilmember Houston.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramachandran.
Aye.
Councilmember Unger.
Yes.
And Chair Gao.
Aye.
Motion is approved with a vote of seven ayes to open the public hearing. I will move, excuse me, I will read it into record. Item 6.1 conducts a public hearing and upon conclusion, receive an informational report on the housing and community development needs for the five-year consolidated plan for fiscal years 25 through 26, through 29 through 30, and annual action plan for fiscal year 25 through 26, and receive an information report on the Department of Housing and Community Development Anti-Displacement Strategic Action Plan. And you have three speakers on this item.
Go ahead, thank you.
Good afternoon, Ugo Ramirez, Deputy Director of Community Development with the Housing and Community Development Department. This public hearing is to solicit public comments on housing and community development needs of low-income Oaklanders. This public hearing is required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, as part of the community engagement process for our next five-year consolidated plan and annual action plan, both of which start July 1st, 2025. These plans will lay out our housing and community development strategies and our spending plan for the annual formula allocations the city of Oakland receives from HUD, which includes the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, program, and three other grant programs that total approximately $14 million annually. These plans are due to HUD in July, and our department will do its best to draft these plans for release in May or June as we grapple with the biannual budgetary impacts on our staffing. When these draft plans are released this spring, city council will hold a second public hearing to solicit public comments on the drafts. It is important to note that these public hearings are pro forma community engagement requirements of HUD. Our department goes above and beyond HUD's requirements to assess community need and to develop our strategy and funding plans. We included as part of this agenda item detailed information on HCD's extensive community engagement process during the past couple of years, which informed our strategic action plan focused on capital investments in affordable housing production and preservation, and most recently, community engagement to inform a strategic action plan focused on the protection of Oaklanders from displacement. This anti-displacement strategic action plan will be released this spring along with the draft consolidated plan and annual action plan as the culmination of our two-year community engagement process. To highlight the extensiveness of our community engagement process, in the first half of 2023, HCD staff engaged over 350 Oakland residents, developer partners, funders, and more. The process included several subject matter expert feedback sessions where specific strategies were discussed in detail, as well as one public meeting in each city council district. The sessions offered live interpretation in Spanish, Cantonese, and Vietnamese, and staff partnered with city council and county board of supervisors' offices and community-based organizations to bring residents to the sessions. Community engagement for the anti-displacement strategic action plan kicked off in early 2024. HCD staff connected with community-based service providers, funders, academics, and other subject matter experts in intensive, two-part, half-day sessions. Part one focused on ground-truthing disparity data and soliciting input and feedback on an equity framework, both of which are described in detail in the agenda report. And part two focused on implementation approaches and policy advocacy priorities. Additionally, HCD co-hosted three listening sessions with members of the city council in October 2024 that provided residents an opportunity to shape the anti-displacement strategic action plan, review key grounding data, and discuss implementation strategies. HCD also carried out extensive interdepartmental and inter-agency consultation with our sister departments and county agencies. In summary, HCD has carried out extensive community engagement and data analysis that will inform our next five-year consolidated plan and annual action plan, which will be released this spring. And members of the public will be able to review and provide comments during the second public hearing at that time. Again, today's public hearing is to solicit public comments on housing and community development needs of low-income Oaklanders. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Members of the council, questions? Public, public speakers? Okay, thank you.
As I call your name, please approach the podium in any order. Please state your name for the record or raise your hand. If you are participating via Zoom, Jeff Levin, Lindsey Haddix, Derek Barnes, please raise your hand if you wish to address the council. I believe all of the speakers are on Zoom. Derek Barnes, please unmute yourself and begin your comments. Jeff Levin, please begin your comments.
Good afternoon, Jeff Levin with East Bay Housing Organizations. First of all, we would just like to commend staff for all of the work that has gone into this, both the outreach and community participation and the approach that they are taking here to go well beyond the requirements for the consolidated plan, to take seriously the need to have an anti-displacement strategy and the equity framework that they are bringing to that work. I just, we want to commend them for, for all of that. We certainly intend to participate going forward as the actual strategies are developed and brought back to council. In the meantime, however, the best action that the city can take to prevent displacement in this city is to fund the contract with Central Legall for legal services for tenant protection. Those legal services make the difference between tenants being evicted and not evicted. They are a critical part of an anti-displacement strategy. And to pull those funds months after they were budgeted, after these organizations began doing this work and at a time when evictions have soared following the end of the eviction moratorium is just not justifiable. And so we urge you to look for other places in the budget, but those funds are essential to preventing people from being displaced and put on the street and adding to our already serious homeless problem. Thank you.
Lindsey Haddix, you are next. Please unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you. My name is Lindsey Haddix, and I am the Executive Director of East Bay Housing Organizations. And I'd like to echo my colleague Jeff Levin's comments. We're really happy to see the city go above and beyond just the basic HUD requirements to do this study so that it has a robust and meaningful anti-displacement strategy in place that meets the needs of Oaklanders who are under pressure of, of facing displacement. And EPO was really happy to participate in, in this study, and we look forward to continuing to work with the city and provide comments going forward. Again, I would like to echo my colleague Jeff's comments that one of the best ways to keep people housed and avoid displacement is to provide folks who are under threat of eviction legal counsel. And given the current cuts that are being discussed to the nonprofit legal counsel provider, El Centro Legall, we would really like to urge the city to find funding to both pay El Centro for the time and staff hours already spent supporting tenants who are under threat of eviction as well as the entirety of their con, of their contract. We know that renters who have access to counsel, who are facing eviction, have a much better success rate of staying housed and avoiding having an eviction on their record, which can prevent them from, from securing stable, affordable housing in the future. We also know that those who face eviction often are black residents and other residents of color. So I would like to urge the city again to continue to fund supporting tenants who are facing eviction now in order to make sure those displacement numbers don't increase. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Derek Barnes, you are next.
Hi, I'm a public clerk, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good evening, city council members. And I want to echo as well the sentiment by city staff and HCD for involving the public. And so I commend the effort. And I, we welcome at East Bay Rental Housing Association the continued work with the city on these very important matters. As it relates to some of the key takeaways, I think, just want to raise, raise up and make sure that it's on everyone's radar, that in terms of, you know, anti-displacement policies, we really do support that. But I think we ought to look at displacement of small owner operators. And as I've shared with director and staff, that there is a through line in terms of the loss of, of small rental property owners and who we're seeing on the streets. There's a direct correlation to that, and I just don't want that to be missed. So when we, when we talk about the loss of black homeowners and rental property owners in Oakland, we see that direct correlation to the number of black individuals who are unhoused and on the streets. I'd also like to talk about preservation priorities, which I was very happy to see acknowledged through the work of the city to talk about how we can keep small property owners in business and to relieve them of some of the burdens of policies and other economic realities to kind of keep them in business because we need them to support the below-market-rate housing. And then finally, just to talk about some of the things that we're seeing in terms of eviction, you know, over 90% of the eviction filings are due to non-payment of rent, and I keep screaming that from the rafters. So we may want to think about, we must think about emergency rental assistance programs as a way to reduce that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Chair. That was the last speaker.
Thank you. Members of the council? Yes, councilmember.
I, I also wanted to reiterate appreciation for staff for going above and beyond for all of the workshops that you did with the council last year and just for really centering equity in this work. So I'm really looking forward to this item coming back. It's, to me, it's one of the primary foundational issues that Oaklanders and any resident of this country in the world need in order to have just a basic level of thriving, which is access to housing. That's why HCD is one of my most important departments. I'm not going to say favorite, but most important in the city. I will say that regarding some of the public speaker comments, I also wanted to agree that losing small operators, small landlords, is, there is a correlation to who we see homeless on the streets of Oakland. So I hope that in this product that we receive later this year, there is a strategy for how to prevent homelessness from our small owner operators. And to the last speaker's comment, the, the black owners, just because you're black, don't mean you're a good landlord. I mean, I've been, I've experienced many evictions from people who look like me for, for illegal reasons. So I just want to be clear that we do have to be equitable, but all skinfolk ain't kinfolk. So we have to, to administer the laws and the rules in an equitable way that lifts up the people who are doing good work in this field of housing, but also holds accountable the people who are evicting thousands and thousands of residents to contribute to the housing crisis that we're experiencing. So with that, I make a motion to move this agenda item, and it'll come back for a second read. Yes? Is this, it's a public hearing? Do we need two readings for?
Through the chair to the parliamentarians, so it's the informational reports? Or are they receiving the report and closing the public hearing?
That's correct.
Okay.
The HUD requirements are just to hold the public hearing, and it's noticed as receiving the informational report.
All right, so I'll move to close the public hearing and accept the info report.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, and I just wanted to also thank you all for, you know, all of your work on this item and look forward to seeing it, seeing you all back in the spring for the comprehensive kind of report as well.
Councilmember. Councilmember Ramachandran, any comments? So there's been a motion and a second.
On item 6.1, moved by councilmember Fife, seconded by councilmember Unger to receive the informational report and close the public hearing. Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Fife.
Aye.
Councilmember Houston is absent. Councilmember Kaplan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramachandran.
Aye.
Councilmember Unger.
Yes.
And Chair Gao.
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of six ayes going to your final action item. Just noting that item eight was added at the supplemental point of this agenda, and it does require urgency motion and vote before it is heard. So if I can have a motion.
So move.
Second.
Was that Brown or Unger? Brown, okay. Council, on the item eight, moved by councilmember Fife, seconded by councilmember Unger for the urgency finding. Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Fife.
Aye.
Councilmember Houston is absent. Councilmember Kaplan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramachandran.
Aye.
Councilmember Unger.
Yes.
And Chair Gao.
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of six ayes. Reading item eight into record, adopt the following pieces of legislation. A resolution authorizing the city to apply for, accept, and appropriate funds as a local agency joint partner under the California Department of Housing and Community Development's Home Key Program for the Mark Twain Homes Affordable Housing Project at 3525 through 3539 Lyon Avenue in an amount not to exceed $35 million in Mark, in making related SEQA findings. And a resolution authorizing the city to apply for, accept, and appropriate funds as a local agency joint partner under the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Development's Home Key Program for the 2700 International Apartments Affordable Housing Project at 2700 International Boulevard in an amount not to exceed $35 million in making-related California Environmental Quality Act findings. And a resolution authorizing the city to apply for, accept, and appropriate funds as a local agency joint partner under the California Department of Housing and Community Development's Home Key Program for the 34th and San Pablo Affordable Housing Project at 3419 through 3431 San Pablo Avenue in an amount not to exceed $35 million in making appropriate SEQA findings. And lastly, a resolution authorizing the city to apply for, accept, and appropriate funds as a local agency joint partner under the California Department of Housing and Community Development's Home Key Program for the Maya Hotel Affordable Housing Project at 4715 Telegraph Avenue in an amount not to exceed $8,500,000 in making appropriate SEQA findings. And you have one speaker on this item.
Thank you. City administration, give us a report.
Good evening, Councilmember Ali Gaylord. I'm the Deputy Director of Oakland HCD, here to make the presentation. And we have a PowerPoint, but the projector went out. Okay. I got it. Okay. We are requesting four resolutions, as you just heard, and we also have changes to three of the resolutions regarding the SEQA findings that we need to read into the record. So I'm not sure if we're, thank you, meant to do that now or at the end of the presentation. It's, okay, we can do it at the end. So the Oakland HCD has identified homeless housing as a priority in our capital investment equity framework, targeting permanent housing interventions to reduce racial disparities, particularly for Black and African-American men who are overrepresented in the homeless population. The Home Key Program is a state program that was launched in July of 2020 for capital and operating for homeless, quick-build housing that needs to be ready to operate in 12 months and fully occupied within 15 months. Home Key Plus is the fourth round of Home Key with $2.15 billion that will be allocated statewide in this funding round. Specifically, this round will focus on expanding housing solutions for homeless veterans and individuals with mental health and/or substance abuse disorder challenges who are at risk of or who are currently experiencing homelessness. The annual point-in-time count is a federally mandated count of unchallenged homeless folks done every two years across the country. In Alameda County, the 2024 point-in-time count reports that 58% of the Alameda County homeless population lives in Oakland, and that is nearly 5,500 people. Homelessness affects Black and African-American population disproportionately, as 52% of the homeless population in Oakland are Black, while the population of Oakland is only about 20% Black. Oakland has been very successful in the prior three rounds of Home Key with nine project awards, bringing in about $104 million of state funding. This created 476 units of homeless exits, with 56% of those being occupied by Black residents. This chart outlines the nine Home Key projects across the three funding rounds that were awarded in Oakland, along with council districts and unit count for each. The Home Key Plus changes for this year, oh, sorry, the background around the Home Key NOFA is in anticipation of a Home Key Four funding round and the launch of the new Rapid Response Homeless Housing Program. Oakland HCD launched a competitive RFP, Request for Proposals, in November of 2023 to select and fund this type of project that we would co-apply to the state with. HCD received 19 applications. One proposal was selected to move forward as a Home Key co-applicant, and three were selected through our R2H2 programs. The Maya Hotel was selected as the Home Key Program project, and the Extended Stay America, Covenant House, and Friendly Manor were selected as the R2H2 projects. Oh, sorry. This year in November, the state HCD released the Home Key Plus November, with the applications released in January. Home Key Plus changes include the population served, which have to be behavioral health clients and veterans. They include the gap financing pathway, and it opens up new construction for use of these funds by extending the timeline to 24 months to be operational. The key, one of the key changes that allows us to bring forward the three additional projects to you for resolution tonight is the gap financing pathway. This pathway is available to jumpstart projects that weren't originally conceptualized as Home Key projects, but could adapt their population served, because they're very shovel-ready. These types of projects would have to have other funding sources committed, such as state or local dollars, and would just need that last bit of funding from the state Home Key Project Program to complete their project. HCD staff is evaluating our existing pipeline of projects that have been awarded through our competitive NOFA processes and reached out to developers to see if they could align their projects to meet these state funding program requirements. The key here would be that there would be no additional city funding required in order for these projects to apply to the state. They are continuing to evaluate their program requirements and have had their initial pre-application calls with state HCD. However, they're continuing to evaluate their projects now. A city resolution is required in order to apply, so we wanted to get these ahead of the council so that we did not delay those applications. Just a quick overview of the Home Key application timeline process. As I stated, in November 2023, we invited applicants to submit Home Key applications for our review and underwriting to see if we would be Home Key co-applicants with them. In November of 2020, oh, sorry, we selected one applicant to go forward as a co-applicant. When the program updates were released from the state in January of 2025, sorry, of 2020, yeah, in January 2025, we went through our pipeline, determined which projects could potentially apply, and now we are here presenting the resolutions with those projects today. The applications are submitted to state HCD on a rolling basis, so it is of utmost importance to submit as early as possible. The awards will come out from the state in the summer. So we have four total applications that we are looking at possibly being submitted. The first is 2700 International Apartments. This was awarded through our new construction NOFA, a city funding commitment of $16.3 million. It's a 74-unit development, with 22 of those units being for homeless veterans. 34th and San Pablo is a 60-unit development with 30 units for homeless housing, also awarded in our new construction NOFA. Mark Twain Homes, this was awarded in our 2023 new construction NOFA, with $13 million committed. And finally, the Maya, which was selected through the Home Key RFP. So the next steps would be to approve the four resolutions. The staff, HCD staff, would work on the co-applications with the developers. The gap financing projects are due to state HCD by March 14th, with all others being due by May 30th of this year, and the awards would be made in the summer of 2025. And then, so gee, are you ready with the, if I may read into the record, the changes for the resolution? Oh, you can go ahead, okay. This just has to do with the SEQA findings on the three pipeline projects since they were already made.
So yes, this is for the three projects, and we're just making a change to the body of the resolution, adding the proper SEQA findings for those projects. So I'll start with the resolution for, this is for the 34th and San Pablo Affordable Housing Project at 3419 to 3431 San Pablo, for, this is the Abbalsie Project. We added the proper SEQA finding, which states, whereas the city has determined pursuant to planning case file number PLN 22165, that the project is exempt from SEQA review due to its compliance with State Senate Bill 35, SB 35, requirements, including providing a significant portion of affordable units. Therefore, the project is considered to have a less-than-significant impact on the environment and only requires a ministerial review process under SB 35 guidelines. Now therefore be it. So this was added to page three for that resolution. And then I'll go to the, the second resolution for the Unity Council Project, which is 2700 International Apartments, also on page three. The last whereas was added. Whereas the city has determined pursuant to planning case file number PLN 20152/TPM11139, that the project is exempt from SEQA review pursuant to SEQA guidelines, Sections 15332 infill development, and 15183 consistency with local zoning, and now therefore be it. The last addition to the, the Mark Twain Homes Affordable Housing Project, this is also on page three, the last whereas was added. So whereas the city has determined pursuant to planning case file number PLN 20138, that the project is exempt from SEQA review pursuant to SEQA guidelines, Sections 15332 infill development, 15183 consistency with local zoning, and 15183.3 streamlining for urban infill projects. Now therefore be it. That's on page three. I also want to add that the second-to-last further resolved was removed from each of those three resolutions. Thank you.
Through the chair, could you please provide my office a red line or a strike through underlying copy for the minute so we could track what you just changed, please? Thank you.
Members of the council.
Mr. Chair and members, in addition, thank you in conference with the city attorney, could you also identify the other whereas's that have been struck from the other resolutions so that that is also placed on record? I think you've covered all of the additions.
You repeat that.
Could you also strike the other whereas's?
Yes.
That have been excluded from the resolutions?
Yes, so the two, in all three of the resolutions, the where, there was two whereas's that were replaced by the whereas that I read. It was the two whereas's above that, that talked about SEQA. So we had the wrong SEQA information in there, and then we had to remove that and add the proper SEQA information in there. And I'll provide the redlined version to the city clerk.
Okay, city attorney.
I was just going to make sure the motion and the amendments were clear on the record, but if the body is clear.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Well, thank you so much for bringing this item forward. I had an opportunity to kind of get briefed on this, and we recognize the urgency, given that the application is due mid-March, and so I would love to move this item forward.
Do you? Any other comments from our council colleagues?
Move this item as amended.
Is there a second? There was a second. Councilmember Five.
On item eight, moved by Councilmember Brown as amended, seconded by Councilmember, I'm sorry, yes, David Boatright.
David Boatright, District Four, assuming all the whereas's didn't change what's in the report, these are my questions, because there's a lot of information in that report that's really hard to follow. What are city-awarded funds? Where do they come from? What budget category are they in? Did this come out of some measure? Or $47 or $48 million is a lot of money. This program that existed, the nine Home Key projects cost $104,468 units, that's $222,000 per unit. This particular project is $160 million, 263 units, and it costs $608,000 per unit. That's a big increase in a short amount of time, and it looks like we're not investigating where these, what these costs are doing, how much they're increasing with time. And it seems, in the case of the Mark Twain unit, that that was purchased by the city or a portion of it, the city pumped some money into, and then they found out that there were all these hazardous conditions, and now we're having to pump more money into them to make them livable? That's what, that's how it reads. I guess that's it. I'd probably have to write a memo to cover all the misleading and hard-to-follow information in this report, but it was not very clear.
Thank you. City administrator, would you, are you able to respond to some of the questions? Where's the money coming from and so forth? Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ali Gaylord from Oakland HCD. Yes, I can respond. The funding sources for the previously awarded projects were mostly from our new construction NOFA. That is made up of funding from our Measure U, Affordable Housing Impact Fees, Jobs Housing Impact Fees, Boomerang, and other funding sources. And those were already previously awarded. There would be no new funding going into any of the new construction NOFA awarded projects that we're recommending go forward. The prior applications that were cited that were awarded Home Key funding, that was just the state funding, that wasn't the total project costs of all of those projects. So I think that's where the confusion may be originating.
Thank you. And if you can provide that in writing, the questions in writing, we'd be happy to answer it. Thank you. Next speaker, please. No other speakers? Okay, councilmembers, there's been a motion and a second, so let's.
On item eight, moved by Councilmember Brown, seconded by Councilmember Five as amended. Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Five.
Aye.
Councilmember Houston is absent. Councilmember Kaplan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramachandran.
Aye.
Councilmember Unger.
Yes.
And Chair Gao.
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of six ayes, one absent, Houston. I believe that was the last of your action items, and you're on council member announcements, and then on to open forum.
I have an announcement to invite Oakland residents to a Thursday Black New Deal event. Dr. Brandy Summers will be conducting surveys and focus groups for individuals that want to lend their voices to the policy decisions that should be happening in this city regarding Black Oaklanders. As we just heard with our previous presentation, we account for over half the homeless population in the city, in addition to a number of negative indicators, and we want to hear from the residents of Oakland about what they would like to see. And so it is a formal focus group, formal surveys, so participants will be compensated for their time, will have some food, but really want people to participate this Thursday in city hall chambers. And there will be rolling surveys and focus groups happening beginning at 5:00 PM. So I wanted to announce that for folks to come and participate.
Thank you. Anyone, any other councilmembers? And so we're finished with public speakers, right?
Yes.
We're not? Go ahead and call the public speakers.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry? Councilmember Kaplan, sorry.
Thank you so much. Um, in honoring not only Black history, but also Black present and future, I want to give a shout-out and appreciation to everyone involved in bringing the NBA HBCU All-Star Game to the city of Oakland this past weekend. Uh, the historically Black colleges and universities of Tuskegee and Morehouse had their game in the Oakland Arena this weekend, and it was packed and successful and thriving, along with several other related events throughout the city. So I want to thank everybody who helped make that happen, that is bringing excitement and vitality and positivity to the Oakland Arena. And of course, doing so also brings revenue to the city of Oakland to fund our vital public services. And looking ahead, the Roots Soccer Games will be starting at the Oakland Coliseum on March twenty-second, March twenty-second of this year. Come back to the Coliseum for soccer, uh, and a lot more other events coming to the arena and Coliseum where we can build community and build revenue for our public services. Thank you.
You?
Calling the open forum speakers, Patricia Renee Brooks, Mr. Hazard, Edward Escobar, Nancy Sidebotham, Grace Ugue, or Uje, I'm sorry if I said that incorrectly, Lorkan Silter, Slitter, and Maven Griffin.
I'm not a fan of political hypocrites, political liars, and political cheats. June twenty-fourth, the, at large office, council districts five and seven worked alongside the office of the city attorney to prepare the resolution for Fentanyl. Put it on their agenda. June twenty-fourth. This is the People's Guide to Project Twenty-five. I should have spoke on item six point one. You better read it because HUD may be dismantled. You better have a backup plan 'cause this, in the White House, his intent are destroying things that would go to the people in general. And for six point one, and you think that's going to be a reality, it may not be.
Thank you, Mr. Hazard, your time is up.
Good evening, councilmen and women. I thank you for giving me this opportunity. I've been trying to get to talk to people in the city of Oakland. My name is Grace Ugue. I'm the pastor in Mountain of Fire Miracles Ministry. I am a volunteer pastor, but I've been in Oakland since nineteen seventy-seven. I schooled here. Here is my home. And when I started, when I got called into the ministry, I started in Hayward, but I was woken up one morning by God to go back to Oakland. Oakland needs prayers. Oakland needs cleansing. We're a spiritual church called Mountain of Fire Miracle Ministries from Lagos, Nigeria. We're all over the world. So I started in Oakland, and we were lucky to buy the place right in front of, uh, DMV, the former Hungry Hunter Building. We call the church Mountain of Fire Miracles Ministries. But very recently, we've been bombarded, oh, I'm sorry, vandalized more than.
Thank you, ma'am, your time is up.
Mr. Chair, I didn't get the council district that she said she was a part of. Seven? I think, I think your council member. Just, just stay until, your, your time is done, your speaking time is done, but just stay, and I'll come and talk to you after the meeting.
Thank you, thank you.
Nancy Sidebotham. You know, you need to start running the meetings and realizing that you work for us. Giving us one minute to talk and then listen to the stuff coming out of your mouths over whatever you want to talk about for as long as you want to talk about? How are you disrespecting the citizens of this city? And send it back to six o'clock at night so people can actually show up to these meetings. The other thing is, when are you going to raise the fee on fireworks? So that we stop them in this town, so that you have money coming in? It's great that you can go after everybody's parking, because that's easy. But you're putting the rest of the city in hell with the fireworks that we have to put up with. And remember, I lost a dog this last year because of it. And I heard that you were gonna look into it, but you didn't. But start thinking about who you work for, who elects you. You're not.
Thank you, Miss Sidebotham, your time is up. If your name was calling, you wish to address the council, please, uh, raise your hand or approach the podium. Maeve Carter Brif- Griffin, Lor- Lorkan Slitter, Patricia Renee Brooks, Edward Escobar. At this time, all names have been called.
We're not? Names have been called, so with, yes.
I just want to, uh, adjourn in memory of Maurice Senegal, uh, who our public speaker mentioned this afternoon, and to the millions of Africans lost in the Middle Passage.
Thank you, thank you. So with that, that the meeting's adjourned.
I'll go ahead, today we adjourn in honor of Maurice Senegal and the millions of Africans lost in the Middle Passage.
Thank you, the meeting's adjourned, thank you.